Okay, good. A little closer. The results of this election, John Robinson, 59, Charles Levitt, 19. John, where are you? There you are.
Congratulations. I, John Robinson, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. So help me God. I, John Robinson, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent upon me as the election moderator according to the Constitution and laws of this state. So help me God. The first order of business, I'd ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Is the mic off? Thank you. Just a couple orders of business, sort of housekeeping business before we get started. If everyone could silence your cellphones, that's the first order of business. I know we've been asked, the microphones, is to give it a good spacing up above so that the feedback is limited when anyone on the boards are addressing any of the issues. I usually follow the main moderator's manual for rules and procedure. If there are any issues, I will fall back on Roberts. I would ask, I'm going to go down through the articles. I'll read the article. If there's any supplemental material, most of you have gone over it. I will not read any of the significant material that goes along with it. I'll read the article. I'll ask for a motion and then a second, and then any discussion. And during the discussion, we've set up a microphone over on this side. When you come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and please stick to the article at hand. And, you know, it's a Tuesday evening. We'd like to try to be concise and direct as possible, and stick to the article. I generally give people a little bit of leeway as far as what they're addressing, but if it's not addressed in the article, I will very likely rule you out of order and ask you to move on. And that's just to be respectful of everybody in the audience, that we want to stick to the articles and what's at hand. I believe we have the town planner as a non-resident, and we just ask for unanimous consent if there are any issues that he needs to address. Is there anybody who objects to him being able to address an issue when it comes up?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to allow non-resident taxpayers, non-resident employees of the Town of Raymond, and any individual who represents a board similar to the library that we give money to be allowed to speak at the meeting.
I'll entertain the motion. Will you have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion on the floor. Charlie, just be concise, to allow non-residents to speak upon any issue, on the articles that are pertaining to the issue. And we have a second. When we vote, just raise your cards. All those in favor, I'll ask you for vote. And then opposed. So all those in favor?
[laughter]
Opposed?
You got it, Dan.
Thank you. I think that covers any of the housekeeping issues. And we'll get on to the articles. Article two, shall Article six, Section D of the Town of Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 5, 2012, and Article 16, Section G of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below. There is a note that follows, and some additional material below.
Move the article?
The planning board makes no recommendations. The selectmen make no recommendation. We have a motion.
Second.
And it is seconded. Is there any discussion on Article two? Again, if you'd like to address the article, please step up to the microphone. All those in favor of Article two? And opposed? Article two passes. Article three, shall Article eight B of the Town of Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 5, 2012, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below. Again, you have some supplemental material. The planning board makes no recommendation. The selectmen make no recommendation. Have a motion?
Move the article?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article three?
Yes.
Step up to the microphone. Thank you. And again, state your name, your address, and be concise as possible.
Greg Foster, 29, Ledge Hill Road. I support this article. It's kind of my concern over this because this issue does affect me. And unfortunately, it went through a lot of stages. Real complicated to explain. In my mind, it still didn't come out right, but I certainly support this in terms of retaining the ability of people to have a minimum lot size of two acres in the former RR1 zone, which was taken away from people like me simply because of zoning change. Unfortunately, this article makes it so that when I am no longer the owner, the next owner does not have that option. But this article as written is certainly better than what we have. Thank you.
You got it.
Ma'am, are you speaking or are you just...? Okay, sorry. I thought somebody else was stepping up to the mic. Is there any other discussion on Article number three? All those in favor? And opposed? Article number three passes. Article four, shall Article 90 and Article 12 of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 5, 2012, and Article three of the Town of Raymond Subdivision Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 7, 2011, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below.
Motion to approve the article?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Article four? All those in favor of Article four? And those opposed? Article four passes. Thank you. Article five, shall the Town of Raymond Street Ordinance as adopted May 18, 2002, and amended through June 7, 2011, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below.
Move Article five.
Second.
Article five has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article five? And opposed? Thank you. Article five passes. Watch those microphones when you're voting. Give a little feedback there. Article six, shall Section 6C, NF, and Section nine of the Town of Raymond Addressing Ordinance as adopted March 1997 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below. The planning board makes no recommendation, and the selectmen make no recommendation.
Move the article?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article six?
John?
Danny, you're at the mic. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering why the planning board's not making a recommendation. They usually do. Can Chairman of the Planning Board... I mean, these articles look like something that come out of Augustus.
Pat Clark, 24 Kelly Lane, Planning Board Chairman. We were asked to look at some of these. This one was actually a proposal by the fire department, not originated through the planning board. They presented their arguments, and the board decided that they didn't want to make a motion on it, for that's simple, as far as a recommendation goes.
You know, in the past, you've always made recommendations, and did you take a vote to send it to town meeting?
Yes.
So...
Because we sent it, well, we sent it to...
You did make a recommendation because you took a vote?
We made a recommendation to send it to the select board for review and forwarding to the town meeting, but without... We were silent on whether it was a thumbs up or a thumb down opinion from the board.
Greg, did you?
Greg Foster, 29, Ledge Hill Road, Raymond. I am on the planning board, however, I'm not representing the planning board in any way. I'm sure the other planning board members would be happy. I am opposed to Article six simply because I'm just plain sick and tired of nanny government, just meddling and monkeying with all kinds of things to do with my life and other things. And I oppose the first ordinance, which made people number their houses, and I oppose forcing people to put numbers on their houses, and if they don't, that they're fined. I don't know. I'm just tired of this stuff. And when it comes to safety and those things, there are a lot of things that individuals are responsible for. I certainly don't think the town should be responsible for all these things. And I just sometimes wonder where it'll end. I'm not sure that it will. And I just would like to see this thing defeated. Negative reinforcement of, you know, by clubbing you over the head with another fine. I don't, just don't think it's the right way to treat people. Thank you.
Craig Messenger, 342 Raymond Hill Road. I work for the fire department and drew up this article. And I need you folks to know that I've been working in this town for eight years. I've been in public service for almost 30. I have never seen a town yet that has had more non-compliance with addressing as this town has. No offense to Mr. Foster, but we need to protect the general public. That's our job. If we can't find the general public, we can't protect them. That goes for police, fire, and EMS. I don't believe Mr. Foster's ever responded to a home where people have not been found and have, lives have been endangered. I have, and it's not a good situation to be in. I would hope that you folks vote this in, and use cooler heads will prevail. Thank you.
Bruce Tupper, Fire Chief, 118 Valley Road, Town of Raymond. To reiterate what the deputy chief just told you, you have to be there, and you have to not find the people because it is a huge impact. I think the next thing I have to add to that is, because your number isn't up, it impacts your neighbor in how quickly we find them. It does slow our response from non-compliance. So you do have to think of your neighbors with this. Thank you.
Tom?
I had an opportunity to experience this particular article recently with my family needing an ambulance, and there were two calls in play at the same time. The more experienced, let's say, crew was on a more serious call, and so I got the backup crew, who was relying on the number on the house or the mailbox. I had my... I thought I had my number on the downhill side, but apparently they came up the uphill side. And so they were unable to find my house as town manager. They overshot it by one house. So in our instance, it was not critical. It was not a life-threatening situation, but it could very well be. And this is nothing but a good idea.
Yes.
Steve Laney, 66, Musson Road. Chief Tupper and others will know that we've had an unfortunate, probably five to eight years down on Musson Road, and I've been there for several of them. And believe me, they have not been able to find the residents. And we've had deaths down there. We've had fires. We've had a couple other things. And it is extremely important because I happen to be lucky to be there so I could direct them to where the house was because I knew where the house was. But if I hadn't been there, they couldn't find it. It's only, the road's only a mile and a half long, but it did delay the rescue getting to the right house because there weren't numbers.
Danny, you're at the mic. Go ahead.
You know, I agree with, you know, the chief and John Willard and the rest, but is there a reason why we have a fine on this? Why is there a penalty on people who don't post their numbers, Chief Tupper? I mean, is there going to be a leeway here?
Good point. And to address that, what we planned on doing is, as we identify these residences without numbers, is that we will send a letter out to the folks and ask for compliance.
Okay.
This gives us some teeth to actually be able to enforce it, which we've never had before. And I think that's a critical piece in this that we all need.
Thank you. That's a good answer.
Ma'am?
Hi, Shannon Nassau, 137 Valley Road. I am the past secretary of the Raymond Fire Association and speaking on their behalf. There are free numbers that we have been providing for at least six months to be able to number your mailbox, your house. We're willing to assist you with that. This does not need to be a huge expense for people. I think that this is just common sense and a smart move to be able to get the ambulance or the firetruck or police response to your house. And we're willing to work with you to assist you in any way we can.
We have a motion on the floor, in favor and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Article six passes. Thank you. Article seven, shall the Town of Raymond Peddlers Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below. You have the supplemental material.
Motion to approve Article seven?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article seven? And this, just to follow up, I was finding the page, the selectmen recommend Article seven. So is there any discussion on Article seven? All those in favor? And opposed? Thank you. Article seven passes. Article eight, shall the Town of Raymond repeal the Raymond Hill Wireless Communications Facility, conditional zone by amending the Town of Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 5, 2012, by removing conditional zoning districts from the list of established districts in Article two, Section A, as shown in strike through below, and by removing Article four, subsection H1, and appendix B, as shown in strike through below, and shall the land use regulation map be amended to remove the Raymond Hill Wireless Communications Facility conditional zone as shown below?
Move the article.
Second.
The planning board recommends Article eight. The selectmen recommend Article eight, and it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article eight? And opposed? Article eight passes. Article nine, see if the town will authorize, authorize and direct the Board of Selectmen to execute on behalf of the town an amendment to the Waste Handling Agreement between the Town and Midmain Waste Action Corporation dated July 1, 1986, the Waste Handling Agreement. The Waste Handling Agreement shall remain in effect until later of May 1, 2035, or termination of the MMWAC Interlocal Solid Waste Agreement, except that upon one year's prior written notice, the town may terminate the Waste Handling Agreement at the end of the fiscal year, as copies of the specific amendments are in file in the town clerk's office and available here in the back of the meeting room. And B, authorize and delegate the authority to amend such Waste Handling Agreement to the Board of Selectmen, provided that no such amendments further extend the term of the Waste Handling Agreement.
Move the article?
Selectmen recommend Article nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article nine? All those in favor of Article nine? And opposed? Article nine passes? It was not moved. Article 10, shall the Town of Raymond authorize the Board of Selectmen to convert the existing tower site lease at 90 Patricia Avenue, property owned by the town, to a perpetual easement for a one-time payment to the town of $900,000 by approving, $900,000, by approving and executing a document in a form substantially similar to the document below marked Exhibit one.
Move the article?
Second.
The selectmen recommend Article 10. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 10? Hold on one second. Was there any discussion?
I was just going to mention that the Budget Committee also recommended Article 10.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Sorry.
All those in favor of Article 10? And opposed? Thank you. Article 10 passes. Article 11, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any property acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes pursuant to the policy adopted by the selectmen, as may be amended from time to time, the policy to remain consistent with state statutes and laws. In all cases, conveyance to be made by municipal quitclaim deed. The selectmen and Budget Committee, I assume, recommend? Is there a motion? Move Article 11?
Second.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, right here. I'd like to see that Article 11, I don't know if you'd make an amendment, but this article, whatever the town should sell, should be advertised in local newspapers and online before they are sold. That way, it's a little more in the open what happens to property acquired by the town.
What type of language are you looking at to add?
Well, you know, it's...
Public notification. Don, you want to address what the town does now?
I didn't actually expect a question on this, so I didn't bring a copy of the written policy, but there is a fairly definitive policy. And, you know, of course, every effort is made, extraordinary effort is made, to return the property to, you know, the original party, ownership party. So, you know, without having the policy in front of me, I couldn't comment on that. But certainly, the selectmen were very deliberative in their development of the policy that we have now. So, you know, I don't believe that this is an issue.
You know, I'd like to, you know, make a point that I don't believe town officials should be purchasing or bidding on these properties as selectmen. We've had that happen in the past, and I think that should be disclosed when it does happen. It's just something, you know, good housekeeping, I would call it. Thank you.
Father?
We have a policy that follows state law on advertising these properties. So there's nothing to amend in the warrant because we already follow state law on the advertising of the property. As far as having a selectman bid on the property, a selectman is a citizen just like anybody else and has rights just like anybody else. And if they want to make a bid on a property that's advertised publicly, and they have the winning bid, they are allowed to do that. There's nothing that prohibits it in state law.
Is that sort of like freedom of speech, Mr. Bruno?
Yes, it is, Mr. Ashad.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on Article 11? Yes.
Peter Levitt, 211 Road. It's just that my understanding is a longstanding principle in ethics is that you avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Is there any other discussion on Article 11? All those in favor of Article 11? And those opposed? Article 11 passes. Thank you. Article 12, to see what dates taxes will be due and to set an interest rate for unpaid amounts, the selectmen recommend first half to be due October 31, 2013, and the second half to be due April 30, 2014, with interest at 7% on any unpaid balances.
Move the article?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and in the warrants, there is no language that indicates, I assume, that the selectmen and Budget Committee...
Yeah, we both recommend.
Both recommend. Okay, all right. My copy does not have the... No, you're good. So the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend approval of this article. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 12?
As a Budget Committee member, I recommended that we reduce that amount. And my comment at the time was, you can't get blood out of a rock, stone, whatever. It's just, if people can't afford the 7%, why should you punish them? I made a recommendation to lower that amount. Unfortunately, it wasn't even addressed properly, but it went down in vote. But 7% for people who already cannot pay their taxes is a lot of money. I don't know how many people are making 7% interest on bank accounts right now. And if they are, please tell me where you're banking. Thank you.
Typically, the town follows the state guidance with this, and this is the, you know, the highest rate allowable. And, you know, Mr. Ashad makes a good point. But historically, you know, people are engaged in various enterprises with respect to their monies. And so I'm sure there are people who cannot pay, and this would be a hardship. There are also people who are creative in the way that they finance things, and if you set that rate low enough, you'll see a certain percentage of people who will say, hey, this investment that I have does better than the penalty I would pay. And so, let me run this out till the absolute last moment. So typically, towns, you know, go with the state guidance and set the rate, you know, both for delinquent taxes and abated taxes at the allowable, highest allowable level. So it's not an unusual thing to do. It's historically what this town has done.
Mr. Moderator? I'd like to make an amendment to Article 12, that the rate should be at 4%.
Second.
We have amendment, we have a motion to amend Article 12 to 4%. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Bruno?
97% of the people in this town pay their taxes on time. Only 3% are delinquent in their taxes. Why would the 97% be forced to carry people who can't afford their tax or can't pay their taxes on time without some kind of a penalty for doing so? The town has done everything in its power to not take back property. We work with people all the time who are delinquent on their taxes, three, four years out. There should be some penalty phase for not paying your taxes on time. Nobody likes to pay taxes. I sure as hell don't. But, you know, but I want to make sure that the town is in a position to continue funding its operations, and that people who aren't paying on time should have some sort of penalty. This is no different than if you... This is no different than if you charge on a credit card and you don't pay it off at the end of the month, you're paying whatever interest rate is on that card. You know that going in when you make a decision not to pay your taxes. Or if you can't pay your taxes, come into the town office and we will work with you. That's what this is about. You know, I understand Mr. DeJardin's logic on this, as far as lowering the interest rate, but you have to make it so it's a penalty for not paying your taxes on time. That's what this is about.
Mr. Moderator? Charles Levitt, Fourteen Levitt Road. I think the point Mr. DeJardin is trying to make is that that three percent of the individuals who can't afford it is similar to the one percent in this nation who also have difficulty getting through the daily existence of paying rent, mortgages, and paying for their food, so I think it's a philosophical motion that he has made to lower that, and in light of the previous article, we have taken, over the past two years since we've implemented the tax-acquired property ordinance that we have in place, we've taken, I'm going to suggest six or seven, possibly more, properties, which is quite a penalty unto itself. So I don't think the three percent is an enforcement issue. I think Mr. DeJardin's recommendation is to be considerate of those who are less fortunate than us, who may have difficulty paying. Their intention is to pay. When they do pay, four percent is less than seven. In this economy, I think Mr. DeJardin is right, that seven percent almost appears usury. If it's the state, I'm not surprised that that's their higher limit, and I think from a philosophical standpoint, I agree with Mr. DeJardin's four percent.
We have a motion on the floor to accept Article twelve as amended to four percent. Is there any other discussion on that?
You have a motion to amend the article?
To amend Article twelve, correct. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of amending Article twelve, again, the amendment is to the percentage of four percent. All those in favor? And opposed? Article four, Article twelve, the four percent amendment, the amendment fails. Go back to the original motion, which was moved and seconded. To accept Article twelve at seven percent. Is there any other discussion on the original article? All those in favor of Article twelve? And opposed? Article twelve passes. Thank you. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at seven percent for the fiscal year, the selectmen recommend this article, and the Budget Committee recommend this article.
Move the article? Second.
Article thirteen's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article thirteen? And those opposed? Article thirteen passes. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of town-owned personal property with value not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. The selectmen recommend this article, and the Budget Committee recommend this article.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article fourteen? All those in favor of Article fourteen? And opposed? Article fourteen passes. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to borrow from or appropriate from fund balance surplus as they deem advisable to meet the unanticipated needs of the community that occur during the fiscal year. Hold on one second. The selectmen recommend an amount not over seventy-five thousand dollars. The Budget Committee recommends an amount not over seventy-five thousand dollars.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article fifteen? All those in favor of Article fifteen? And opposed? Thank you. Article sixteen, to see if the town will authorize a selectman for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, to transfer funds between appropriation accounts as long as the grand total of all appropriations is not exceeded. Any such transfers to be approved only at properly called public meeting of the selectmen.
Move the article? Second.
The article's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article sixteen? And opposed? Thank you. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the use of town employees and/or town-owned equipment, or independent contractors hired by the town for maintenance on private roads in special and certain circumstances wherein the public's interest. There's a note of explanation and three examples. Accept a motion.
Move the article? Second.
Article seventeen's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article seventeen? And opposed? Article seventeen passes. Thank you. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to Main Revenue Statute five oh six. The-
Yes. Move the article? Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And Dana, just because people are for the TV, and people are coming in maybe a little late, just make sure you state your name and your address.
Dana DeJardin, Sixty-four River Road, member of the Budget Committee, American citizen. I find Article eighteen, prepayments of taxes not yet committed, you know, I'd just like an explanation of that, if I could, please.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Bruno, Four Christina Court in Raymond. All it means, if someone wants to come in and pay their taxes ahead of time, they're allowed to.
Do they get a discount, Mr. Bruno?
No, Mr. DeJardin.
I also made that motion as a Budget Member, Committee Member, at the Budget Meeting, so, you know, when you see Budget Committee recommends, though, you know, it's not always a unanimous vote, just to let the public know, but-
Mr. Moderator?
If you could, if the people that can't afford the, you know, if there'd be an incentive to pay your taxes early, maybe that would work to get them to pay earlier, but, you know, it's just confusing, I guess. I think there is other towns that do it, and I think Raymond should do the same. I mean, I own property in another town, and if you pay your taxes prior to a certain date, you get a discount, and, I mean, I know that the way the selectmen work up there, they can, you know, make it work either way, so it doesn't matter, but it's, you know, it would be a little incentive, maybe, to pay your taxes if you get a two or three percent discount, but then again, only the rich people could afford it, right?
I just wanted to comment that it is true that towns have done that historically. Most towns moved away from it years ago, however, because it basically runs counterintuitive to the argument that he just made about helping people who are having difficulty with the taxes. If you offer a discount to those who pay, those who cannot pay have to pay the cost of that.
Louise Lester, Ten Hartley Lane. I just would like to say that sometimes people don't get the numbers right when they're sending their taxes in. Sometimes they pay a little less, sometimes they pay a little bit more, and this would allow us to keep it on the books to go into the next years. A lot of people appreciate that, because sometimes it's only a matter of five, ten, maybe twenty-five dollars, and instead of trading checks around, refunding money and all that sort of thing, they choose to put it on their next year's taxes, and it just, it helps the office.
Thank you. We have a article on the floor that been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Article eighteen? And those opposed? Thank you. Article eighteen passes. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars from the tax increment of the Pipeline Route three oh two Tax Increment Financing District, for FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, projects proposed in the Tax Increment Financing District Program, and the items included, included in this item are Raymond Casco Historical Society, eighteen hundred dollars, Raymond Waterways Association Mill Foil Program, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. The selectmen recommend Article nineteen, and the Budget Committee recommends Article nineteen.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article nineteen? All those in favor of Article nineteen? And those opposed? Thank you. Article nineteen passes. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five hundred, five hundred and three dollars for the administration account, the selectmen recommend this article, and the Budget Committee recommends this article.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article twenty? All those in favor of Article twenty? And opposed? Thank you. Article twenty passes. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate forty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the assessing account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-one, the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-one.
Move the article? Second.
Article twenty-one's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-one? And opposed? Article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for the Town Hall Account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-two, the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-two.
Move the article? Second.
Article twenty-two's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-two? And opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-two passes. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and four dollars for the insurance account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-three, the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-three.
Move the article? Second.
Article twenty-three's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Dana?
Charlie had his hand up.
Oh, sorry. See your hands.
Charles Levitt, Fourteen Levitt Road. I would just like to make a plea for the next Select Board going forward, that we spend some time and effort looking at the health insurance for town employees. I think during these last budget deliberations, we have found that we have pieced together in a very odd way, a program that would pretty much be considered unsatisfactory for anyone working, whether it's in small business or in a larger institution. It's almost now where the town is paying for a deductible program, but it's almost as if it's a catastrophic health insurance program, and we've also had incentives in place to hopefully have people who can get insurance from their spouse's workplace to shift the burden. It's a typical device that's been used in health insurance over the years, but I think it's time that this area has to be revisited and looked at. It's a major cost center for the town, and I don't think we're doing any favor to the town employees of not going forward and trying to come up with a better idea.
I'm all set. That's, he covered it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor on Article twenty-three. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-three? And those opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-three passes. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six thousand dollars for the general assistance account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-four, and the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-four.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-four? All those in favor? And opposed? Article twenty-four passes. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the Technology Department account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-five, and the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-five.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-five? All those in favor? And opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-five passes. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars for the Community Development Account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-six, the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-six.
Move to accept Article twenty-six?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-six? And opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-six passes. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars for the Fire Rescue Department, the selectmen recommended Article twenty-seven, the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-seven.
Move Article twenty-seven?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-seven? And opposed? Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Animal Control Account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-eight?
The Committee recommends-
The Committee recommends Article twenty-eight.
Move Article twenty-eight? Second.
Article twenty-eight's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-eight passes. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars for the infrastructure account, the selectmen recommend Article twenty-nine, and the Budget Committee recommends Article twenty-nine.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-nine? All those in favor? And those opposed? Article twenty-nine passes. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for the Public Works Account, the selectmen recommend Article thirty, and the Budget Committee recommends Article thirty.
Move Article thirty? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article thirty? All those in favor of Article thirty? And opposed? Article thirty passes. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and four dollars for the Solid Waste Account, the selectmen recommend Article thirty-one, and the Budget Committee recommends Article thirty-one.
Move the article? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article thirty-one? All those in favor of Article thirty-one? And opposed? Thank you. Article thirty-one passes. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for the Cemeteries Account, the selectmen recommend Article thirty-two, and the Budget Committee recommends Article thirty-two.
Move Article thirty-two? Second.
Article thirty-two's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article thirty-two? And opposed? Thank you. Article thirty-two passes. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the Parks and Recorations Account. It includes materials, maintenance equipment, twenty-five hundred dollars, service contracts, six thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, Raymond Rattler's snowmobile, eight hundred dollars, Raymond Baseball Softball, one thousand dollars, and Agawam Mowing Soccer, two thousand dollars. The selectmen recommend Article thirty-three, the Budget Committee recommends Article thirty-three.
Move Article thirty-three? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article thirty-three? It's an alarm. I can't silence it.[1741.21][1741.21](laughing) Apologies. I call my kids every night at eight o'clock, so, just a reminder. So Article thirty-three, is there any discussion? I think we-
You were silencing your phone.
I was, thank you. You guys are very efficient tonight. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the Raymond Village Library, the selectmen recommend Article thirty-four, the Budget Committee recommends Article thirty-four.
Move Article thirty-four? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Norma Richard, Two Annika Road-
Norma Richard, 2 Annika Road. And I want to thank the Town of Raymond. I'm the Secretary of the Board of Trustees for Raymond Village Library and would like to thank the town for their ongoing support of the library. This amount will cover 46% of our library expenses and the rest of those are done through fundraising, including our annual appeal, the garden sale, which is this Saturday. If it rains, it will be inside the library and a new initiative this year with the garden tour on June 29th. It really takes a village to run the Raymond Village Library and we want to thank all of our volunteers and our staff. We've had some incredible things that have been happening at the library over the past year. Just to share with you, our new director, Sally Holt, has applied for and received over $15,000 worth of grant funds to increase our collection, increase our programming, and also that includes a $10,000 grant from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation to pay for both equipment and training support as we move into our automation phase. We have, I think you've seen an increase in programming at the library, our children's program, we've had 1,383 kids, not all at the same time, participating, and many days we have 15 to 25 kids and parents who are there for toddler and baby time. We've also had over 2,300 patrons that have been participating in programs through May. So we certainly appreciate the support that the town continues to give us and really are looking forward to providing more services for the town over this next year.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor for Article 34. All those in favor and opposed? Article 34 passes. Thank you. Article 35, to see whether the town will vote to carry forward any existing balance in the capital improvement account. The Selectmen recommend Article 35 and the Budget Committee recommends Article 35.
Move Article 35?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 35?
Yes, right here. Dana Disjardins, 64 River Road. What was the balance that was, or was there a balance carried forward this year in that fund balance? And how much was it? Can anybody answer that?
I don't have that information this evening. I'm not sure. Nancy Yates, our Finance Director, may have a, not with you. Okay, so I guess the answer is we can get you that information. We don't have it this evening.
Is there a location they can find it?
We'll post it on the website and we'll email it to Mr. Disjardins tomorrow morning.
That's, that's pretty much been the answers we've been getting as a member of the Budget Committee when we ask questions, financial questions. So it's, I'm used to that answer. I guess I just wanted to verify what the amount was and I was hoping that could have been answered at town meeting, but thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Since Mr. Disjardins is a member of the Budget Committee, he had that information in front of him when we were going through the budget. So I'm sure you must have it in your notes somewhere, Mr. Disjardins.
Probably have it right here, but I'm asking the CEO of the town.
Well, Mr. Moderator, if you have it in front of you, are you an attorney, you know, trying to ask a question and you know the answer to? Why not share it with everybody if you have the answer right there?
I could probably look it up, but I was asking the answer, the question to the CEO.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
I guess, Rolfe Olson, 17 Brook Road. You know, the question is getting a little bit beyond what the, what the intent of that article is. The article really addresses what the purpose of a capital improvement plan is, which is to do some pre-funding of major items and things like that. This article allows us to do that and carry those funds forward. Otherwise you would, you know, those funds would then roll over and anything that's not expended there would roll over into the undisputed surplus. This allows that to stay inside that fund to do what a capital improvement plan is supposed to do. So the whole capital plan is laid out and that's, that's looked at in, on an ongoing basis under the, in the budget deliberations as well as the ongoing work of the Select Board.
Thank you for that explanation for the article. It's in front of us, Article 35. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion on Article 35? All those in favor and opposed? Article 35 passes. Thank you. Article 36, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $1,291,810 for the capital improvement account, the Selectmen recommend Article 36 and the Budget Committee recommends Article 36.
Move this article?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 36? All those in favor of Article 36 and opposed? Thank you. Article 36 passes. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $627,814 for the County Tax Account, the Selectmen recommend Article 37 and the Budget Committee recommends Article 37.
Move Article 37?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 37? All those in favor of Article 37 and those opposed? Thank you. Article 37 passes. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the total sum of $2,074,300 from the estimated non-property tax revenues to reduce the property tax commitment, together with all categories of funds which may be available from the federal government and the other sources. There's a note that includes, the sum includes $705,000 derived from the cell tower event sale. The Selectmen recommend Article 38 and the Budget Committee recommends Article 38.
Move Article 38?
Second.
Article 38's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor and opposed? Thank you. Article 38 passes. Article 39, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to accept or reject grants, donations, and/or gifts of money to the Town of Raymond and to expend monies donated for specific purposes. The Selectmen recommend Article 39 and the Budget Committee recommends Article 39.
Move Article 39?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 39? All those in favor and those opposed? Thank you. Article 39 passes. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to accept certain state funds as provided by the main state legislature during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and the other funds provided by any other entity included but not limited to municipal revenue sharing, local road assistance, emergency management assistance, snowmobile registration money, TRIGO reimbursement, general assistance reimbursement, veterans exemption reimbursement, state grants, or other funds. The Selectmen recommend Article 40 and the Budget Committee recommends Article 40.
Move Article 40?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 40? All those in favor and opposed? Thank you. Article 40 passes. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to utilize the voting machine reserve in the amount of $6,500 for FY 2013-2014 property tax relief. There's an explanation. The state will be leasing machines for all municipalities, so these funds are no longer needed for the purpose of purchasing a voting machine. The Selectmen recommend Article 41 and the Budget Committee recommends Article 41.
Move Article 41?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 41 and opposed? Thank you. Article 41 passes. Article 42, LD1, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $2,175,143.47 established for the Town of Raymond by state law in the Articles 9 and 38. In the event that Articles 9 and 38 are not approved, the Budget Committee, the Selectmen make no recommendation, the Budget Committee makes no recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 42.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 42.
Mr. Moderator, if I can, Joe Bruno for Christina Court. The reason we don't need this article is we passed the purchase of the tower sale. That $900,000 we're receiving funds the entire budget, this was in case that we did not pass that tower sale. So now we are not going to exceed LD1, so therefore we don't need to vote on this article.
Thank you for that explanation. Is there any other discussion on Article 42? It's been moved for indefinite postponement. All those in favor and opposed? Thank you. Article 42 was indefinitely postponed. Article 43, shall the town, one, approve a road reconstruction and repaving program at an estimated cost of $2 million? Two, appropriate a sum not to exceed $2 million to fund the cost of this program, including cost of issuance? And three, to fund said appropriation, authorize the Treasurer and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to issue general obligation securities of the Town of Raymond, including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof. In aggregate principle, not to exceed $2 million, and the discretion to fix the dates, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption, places of payment, form refunding, and other details of said securities, including execution and delivery of said securities on behalf of the Town of Raymond and to provide for the sale thereof, is hereby delegated to the Treasurer and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And there is explanation, recommendations. We have a...
Move the article?
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The Selectmen had recommended the article and the Budget Committee had recommended the article. Ma'am, please step up to the mic.
(inaudible).
We can move the mic. We can move the mic to you. Thank you.
I want to know how much paving does $2 million provide in this, in this city?
And could you, could you state your name and?
I'm Marley Turner, 31 Big Pine Road.
And the question is how much does $2 million dollars provide for?
I think we need to turn the...
You'll take that one, Nate?
The $2 million it'll pave approximately four and a half miles of road. We have a list of roads that we're going to pave.
And Nathan, could you just state your name and?
I'm sorry. Nathan White, I'm the Public Works Director of the 30 Spiller Hill Road in Raymond. With the bond money, we're going to overlay about two miles of Raymond Cape, two miles of mountain road, be a surface overlay on Mill Street, a maintenance overlay on the entire length of North Raymond Road, maintenance surface overlay on Spiller Hill, and reclaim and base pavement on Valley Road.
Did everyone hear that? I'm asking her to repeat it. Thank you.
To kind of amplify on that, there was a, at the last annual meeting, there was a call to put a committee together to look at the road, the road improvements and whatnot. The recommendations came out of the committee for raising this bond, but part and parcel of that is a road management program that is, that the town has implemented, which looks at the condition of all the roads and keeps a continuing inventory on that. That program is what drives the priority list on the paving. So it's looking at the, it's looking at the usage of the road as well as the condition of the road, the breakdown of the road, to determine what roads need the work to prioritize which ones will go first, second, and third. The intent was to take this $2 million to bring roads up, but also to continue the overall maintenance so that we could keep roads on about a 10-year cycle and keep them at a level where they're not breaking down on us. What had happened in the past is we, you know, the, the road, road maintenance has always been the sacrificial lamb in favor of trying to keep numbers low and we would defray and delay maintenance and it's coming back to get us. So the, the theory was to go to the bond, which gave us the money that was designated specifically to that, to be able to get our assets back up to where they should be and keep the town moving in a progressive manner that way. That, that list that Nathan has gone through is, you know, it's, you know, that's what, that's what the program is saying now, that if something drastic were to change or something would come up, then that risk, that list can be reshuffled a little bit to keep the roads in, in good condition for us all.
Do you want to bring the mic back over? Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you for that. Is Webb's Mills Road a state road and not a town road? And is that why it is in such terrible condition?
I can answer that, yeah.
Is that right?
Me too.
But Webb's Mills is supposed to be repaved within the next month, right?
No, they're, they pushed that off till 2014. They're going to do some patchwork, is what they...
And they're going to patch it.
Correct. 2014, they've marked the Egypt Road and 85 for a (inaudible). That can start with.
Could you hold the microphone up? Thank you. I think everyone heard you. Thank you.
If I can clarify that a little bit, Nathan, too, even though it is a state road, the state in its infinite wisdom won't take full responsibility for it and typically comes and asks us for partial, partial help in doing that. That was contemplated in the road improvement plan and the, the recommendation from that committee was that work there be done as long as the state pays a minimum of 50% of the work on there. So it, it wasn't, it wasn't forgotten about, but the hope is that the state will step up and do what it's supposed to, but at the same time, looking at the rescue vehicles and things that are going up and down there, as well as the kids going to school, there's a practical side that the town may have to step up and do some, some co-opting with there, with that.
Mr. Moderator?
And the town did step up, oh, I'm sorry. And the town did step up about 10 years ago with three different rural road initiative programs with the Maine Department of Transportation. I disagree vehemently with this program because I think it's the state's responsibility, but unfortunately, the state has pitted one town against another and so the towns that are willing to share in the state's direct costs, get the road work on a priority basis. So we may well have to contribute to that to make it happen again. We did the last time.
Joe Bruno. If you look at page 38 on your capital improvement account, you'll also notice that we raised the road paving maintenance from $240,000 to $500,000 this year. You already voted that in. So, so we're in reality going to have about $2.5 million to deal with on these roads and this is part of a 10-year program that we're looking at. We also have a couple of bonds that will retire next year, so the cost to the Raymond taxpayer will be flat. It will have no pressure on your property taxes if we do this road maintenance program
I would just like to add, if you missed the handout over in the table, the road program is over here for you to pick up.
And the detailed road surface management study and program is posted on the website if you want more information, more detailed information about the group that Rolfe talked about that was impaneled after last year's annual town meeting. That report is publicly available.
Mr. Moderator? Charles Love at 14 Levitt Road. And just as a footnote to this, this whole discussion, the elected officials before you tonight had heard from this community over the last several years and we could see by the groans and the pain on the faces of the people who've driven on our roads, that this town had to stop kicking the can down the road, so to speak, and get serious about taking the initiative to fix these roads. These elected officials here tonight have done that and we did it with sometimes not being nice, but doing it right. What we did is we sold an asset. It was less than a half an acre of land. We got $900,000 for that half acre of land. We then had before us a budget that was not LD1 compliant. It was $161,000 over LD1 compliance and we took that additional revenue from the assets that we liquidated on your behalf in order to put it back into infrastructure and also to keep the municipal side of your tax rate again stable. So again... So again, I'll just reiterate, sometimes when you see legislation, just like sausage, you might not want to see how it's made, but the end result is this community benefited by these discussions, both with a stable tax rate, which assists everyone, regardless of whether you get a discount or whether you're paying 7 percent. It helps everyone, and these roads will help everyone. And that's the nature of politics, and I think we've accomplished it very well.
And just a point of interest, your state representative, Mike Collins, in the back room, if you want to discuss any of those state issues, Mike is always here to help. We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 43? And those opposed? Article 43 passes?
Make your motion to adjourn.
Mr. Moderator, before we adjourn, may I make a comment, please? If it's all right with Mr. Bruno, because he was ahead.
Well, it's not whether Mr. Bruno wants.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to a couple members of our community who have passed on. One of them was Gene Carter, a member of the budget committee, and the other one was Peter Walgreen, a dedicated volunteer for Raymond Rec, who was on the board of directors, involved with the ski program. He was involved with the, you know, with the Raymond Waterways, the Mill Foil. I used to call them the weed cup, but he will greatly be missed in our community at both levels, especially the recreation, because he was very involved with the ski program, volunteered. And I'd like to thank those two members of past committees and thank them for their time and service. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana, for those remarks. And I just wanted to take a moment and thank everybody. I thought the discussion was very civil tonight, very concise, and you moved right along, so I appreciate that. We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you very much.